Welcome, everyone, to the February 29th Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome to our guests, and we'll look forward to today, a discussion of the implementation of the road bond measure. So, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn over to Kirk and his team, and then, once Kirk does his piece, he'll invite his team up, and I'll sit over on the side to give them a roundtable.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so, thanks for the opportunity to be here. This is not the first time we've talked about this aspect of the bond measure, so it gets a bit redundant, but it is, you know, by design. You might recall that in November of 2008, which, believe it or not, is almost four years ago, Eugene's voters approved a bond measure for street repairs in the amount of $35.9 million over a five-year period. The bond resolution had some particular stipulations to it. One was that there were specific projects identified. Second was that there would be a separate outside financial auditor engaged to review the expenditures each year. And finally, that a street repair review panel would be appointed to advise City Manager on how the funds were being expended, and specifically, their charge was to prepare a report, separate from the auditor, that provided their documentation as to confirming that the bond proceeds were spent in accordance with the bond resolution. So today's work session will provide an opportunity to formally provide the auditor's findings, to lay out the third-year Street Repair Review Panel's report. And then, the third thing we will do is give you a run-through of the 2012 Pavement Management Report, to give you a little juxtaposition as to where we're standing on the network, given the work that we've been doing the past several years. Excuse me. So, I think it's always helpful to do a quick memory check, because it kind of fades the inconvenience of the projects that we do, kind of becomes something that we forget. But you might recall that some of the major 2011 projects included 18th Avenue from Patterson to Washington, Alder Street from Broadway to 18th, and then, major sections of Coburg Road, Hilliard Street, Pearl Street, River Road, Willamette Street, together with a portion of the South Bank off-street path. The auditor's findings, there's a letter included in your packet. We engaged Isler CPA once again. Their work amounted to testing about 54 percent of the expenditures, or just a bit more than $5 million from last year's bond expenditures. And quoting from their letter, their findings were, "Based on our limited testing, we noted that the city followed the purpose and limitation of City Council Resolution 4953, and with regard to the expenditures testing, the important finding is that no exceptions were noted to that." Also in your packet is the report from the Street Repair Review Panel. Just as a reminder, this 12-member group was originally appointed in October of 2009, and all but one of the original 12 members have stayed with us through the third year, and provide some good continuity and very useful input. The group, in addition to this report, met two times over the past year, and you might recall, during the course of last year, brought in a listing of recommended additional projects to be funded through the bond measure, as a result of cost savings that we had received during the course of the work. In the process of putting together the report that's in your packet, the group met three times over the winter, including a bus tour of the completed projects. That results in the report that you have today. Just as a reminder, the Street Repair Review Panel members involved with this report include Paul Atkins, John Borowski, Howie Burnett, Janet Calvert, Paul Holbo, Bob Klein, Steve Lee, Bruce Mulligan, Ollie Snowden, Clayton Walker, Gary Wildish, and Jim Wilcox. I know that a couple of those folks are here today, John Borowski and Bob Klein, for sure.
Paul Holbo.
And Paul Holbo is also here, so we acknowledge them.
Ollie's back here, too.
Good, good. Can't see behind me, though. We appreciate, certainly appreciate their efforts. Paul Atkins and Jim Wilcox have subsequently left the group, and we then welcome Sue Walling and Mel Damewood, who will carry on with subsequent work. Quoting from the Street Repair Review Panel's report, "Based on this limited review and all materials presented to us, we unanimously conclude that the bond proceeds were used for the authorized purposes and in compliance with the limitations and restrictions outlined in Council Resolution 4953." Some of the highlights of their report, and there are several, continue to acknowledge the sustainability efforts through such areas as the continued use of warm-mixed asphalt, some of the in-place recycling. And last year, there was actually a process of using reclaimed asphalt shingles in some of the projects. The economic impact of the work is estimated at 135 full-time jobs in calendar year 2011. Acknowledge that there are more projects, that the original measure identified 32, and with what has been added, we will be at 54 projects before we're done with this one. And also acknowledge the overall progress of working on the backlog that will be the subject of what we cover here in just a couple of minutes. So, before turning it over to the maintenance staff, I think it's appropriate to acknowledge a number of players that helped us get to this point, and there are many. You know, thanks again to the council for taking what was certainly a risk in 2008 to put this before the voters, that's made the work possible. And also acknowledge the work of the engineering staff, who has really done great work, paying attention to details, and getting the work done that results in some of the cost savings and community acceptance, environmental stewardship, just the positive face and building of confidence that we've seen as a result of this type of work. But we also very much appreciate the work of the finance staff, and through innovative financing techniques, has allowed us to stretch the bond proceeds to the maximum extent possible. And last, but certainly not least, we acknowledge the great efforts of the local contractor pool, and, you know, virtually all of this money has been entered into contracts with local contractors, so it's been a win-win for the community. At this point, I'd like to bring Jeff Langston and Eric Johnson from our Maintenance Division up, and they will give you a quick run-through on the pavement management report, and then we'll have questions at the end.
Thank you. So, I'm Jeff Langston, the Maintenance Director for the City Public Works, and this is Eric Johnson, who's the Surface Operations Manager. And we're going to talk to you today about the 2012 Maintenance Pavement Management Report.
All right, thank you. I'll start off, I think everybody's gotten a copy of...
Mm-hmm. Are we going to do this, or am I going to move?
Got to turn it on. There we go. Everybody should have received a copy of the 2012 Pavement Management Report in their council packet. We ran a similar PowerPoint presentation in the January for the SSRP group, and we felt this was a good time to also do this with the council, so thanks for inviting us here. Of course, the time I've been doing this, I think this is the first time that we've been able to come in here and explain the report, even though we've always provided copies. So, we're open for any questions you might have that are within this PowerPoint or outside the PowerPoint. This is also available to the public, too, on our Public Works homepage, so if the public wants to review this report, that's the place to go for it, so. So instead of going through the whole report, we just wanted to do a summary of what's in this 26-page report, and we'll briefly go through what we felt were the key points to address, give you a little bit of background on the pavement management system that we use, provide the 2012 backlog number, some funding scenarios we'll go over, projected funding for the future, some historical data on different classifications of streets, the impacts of the funding, and what we see the trends are for the future. We've also produced a bond extension, and we ran a five-year scenario, so Jeff will go over that chart in this PowerPoint. And in the last two years, this is the second year that we've actually included unimproved street condition reports, and also off-street shared paths, we've included that in our report. And then, at the end, there's a total map with all the projects that we've done since 2002, so you'll get a feel for system upgrade. The pavement management system that we're currently using is called Centerline. Centerline was developed in cooperation with Washington DOT and the Leaven Cities in Washington also. We've been rating streets in Eugene since 1987, so we have a lot of data that we go off of. Our rating frequencies, we actually, we do field ratings, so people are actually walking all the streets in Eugene each summer during our rating season, which is typically the dry season, first part of June through October. They rate arterial and collector streets annually. We do residential streets on a three-year cycle, so, and we also rate unimproved streets and our shared-use paths on a two-year cycle. So, we're actually physically getting out there and collecting that data. You'll see in the report, we talk a lot about the overall condition index, which is the OCI, and those are the pavement distresses that our raters are looking at when they go out and score a street or a street segment. Our report also allows us to produce the backlog estimates and the condition trends that you'll see in this report. In the street system, you're allowed to do street system analysis, too, so we can look at current and projected treatment needs that different streets need, or different classifications of streets need, so we can do a lot of future planning. We can also, we have a decision model in there that we can, that we can use. We can either use the decision model that we've created for project selection, or we can force projects in, and an example of that would be the bond measures, where, you know, we might, there may be a street that our system might not have picked out to be done, but we can force that project into it, so. And we can play around with different funding scenarios also, so as we look at different opportunities for funding sources, we can, we can put that into the system and see how that projects our backlog and so forth, so. So here's the 2012 repair backlog. As you can see, last year, we were at, in 2011, our backlog was 139,000. And the work that was done with the bond measure and the local gas tax, we've reduced that down to $118 million this year, so there's been a large reduction. I've also included 2010 backlog, so you can see a positive decrease in the backlog over the last three years. Each report, we put in some funding scenarios, and these are, these are important, I guess, to get a feel for what would happen if we spent so much money per year over the next 10 years. And so, the first, number one, shows that if we maintain our current funding, including the bond measure, this results in a backlog projected to be at $264 million in 10 years. So, from the 118 that we're at currently, in 10 years with our current estimated funding, we're going to be back up to $264 million. Our second scenario shows a funding level of $15 million. Last year's report, to do this same scenario, we would have been at $18 million, so there's been a reduction to do the same thing, repair arterial and collector streets currently at a reconstruct level. We're also able to prevent arterial and collectors from falling into the reconstruct level, and eliminates reconstruct backlogs for all streets in 15 years, and that would include residentials. The third scenario would be our $18 million scenario, which, three years, or last year was a $21.5 million scenario, prevents any streets from falling into the reconstruct level, and eliminates reconstruct backlogs in 10 years, so it shortens that by five years from the previous scenario. This slide shows our projected funding as we see it today. One thing to note is, in FY '14, would be the last year of our, of our bond, and then we go back to relying mainly on our local gas tax and some other smaller funds that we might collect. So we go from $11 million budget down to about a $3.3 million.
So this is, these are graphs that we are using to project what the system is going to look like in the future. We have three categories on there. The green line is no treatment, and the yellow line, which looks a little blue from here, is overlays, and then the red line shows reconstructs. This graph is for arterial street systems, and as you can see, there's been a pretty dramatic increase in streets that need no treatment because of the bond measure, and corresponding dip in the streets that need reconstruction, so taking care of quite a bit of streets in the arterial classification. One interesting thing showed up in this year's analysis, and that is, we're starting to see a little bit of deterioration in the streets that were done initially in the bond. As expected, they're typically on a 12-, 15-year cycle, so we're starting to see and project some of that deterioration, which is why the overlay line starts to increase here.
If you add those three together, it's 100 percent.
Yes, yes. The next graph is the same thing for the collector system, and again, you see a pretty dramatic increase in no treatment because of the bond measure, and a corresponding decrease in reconstructs and overlays. So again, on both of these graphs, we're showing pretty good progress on the system. This third graph is the one that concerns me. We have been prioritizing our funding towards arterial and collector since we started the bonds, since we started the local option gas tax. And as you can see, the residential streets, which have not gotten much treatment besides slurry seals, are continuing to deteriorate. And in fact, we're projecting somewhere around this year that we're going to start to see an increase in streets falling into the re category. If we go back a couple of slides, actually, both of those slides, you can see we've got a little bit of a gap here before we're going to start to need to do treatment on arterial and collector again. And we've got the system in pretty good shape with most of the street repairs done. I think this gives us an opportunity to concentrate some efforts on residential streets and start to bring this part of the system back up. Residential streets are actually better than 60 percent of the system, so the graphs aren't the same as far as the number of streets. There's a substantial amount of work that's shown here in the residential street system. The last graph is just the overall system. Again, we've seen a little bit of dip with the residential because of the volume of those streets, flattens the graph out pretty well.
What are the percentages for arterial and collector? It's residential 60.
It should be...
If I can look that up.
This next graph is the overall system with the funding, assuming that there will be a five-year extension of the bond, basically the same sort of funding level, the same sort of criteria that were used on the original bond. So, as you can see, the bond measure does help, but it doesn't completely cure the problem. And, whoops, wrong button. It does keep our reconstructs relatively stable and helps keep streets from falling into that category.
So just really quick to answer that question about the percentages, I have it in miles. Out of the 430 miles of streets, improved streets that we have, 73 miles are arterials, 53 miles are collectors, and 302 miles are residentials, so. And there's more of a breakup, breakdown of that, those numbers in the management report. So as I said, we included the unimproved street system, due in part to some of the work we've been doing over the last four years, we enhanced pothole program. We have 88 lane miles of unimproved asphalt streets, and we've, over the last, like I said, over the last four years, we've started to do more extensive work on those, those types of streets, so you can see that we still have about, let me get this figure here, about 40 percent of our 88 lane miles are still in the poor condition, but a positive is that we have about 36 percent of our system in the good to excellent, so we have made a big dent in, in the condition of the unimproved streets, so.
It's important to note that we're not bringing those streets up to city standards. We're basically putting an overlay over the top of them with a limited life and questionable base and structure underneath it. And that $11 million price tag is the price for doing maintenance overlays on the rest of the system.
And this just shows the trend over the last two years. You can see that we are making a dent in the, in the poor conditions. We've gone from 38 lane miles to 34.9, basically 35, and our excellent condition has jumped from 19 to 23.5, so we are making a dent in it, and it's a very popular program. We've also included the off-street shared-use paths, and there's 41 miles of shared-use paths, and you can see that a large percentage of them, 26.27 miles are in excellent condition, and the poor condition is 2.5 lane miles, or centerline miles, so. And currently, we're spending in the neighborhood of $350,000 plus on off-street bike paths. Here's a total system map since 2002. This also includes not only the overlay projects, the reconstruct projects, but also the slurry seal projects that we do each year. Been able to treat 347 lane miles out of the 1,300 lane miles the city has in their street system.
So, I just want to say, want to turn the lights back on, somebody? Thank you for all the work, in spite of how big the, we still have to go. A lot has been done, and we're really appreciative, and I want to also express my appreciation for sort of what I call the attention to the triple bottom line, that warm mix and recycling and reused products, and also the efforts to reduce the carbon emissions and all of that. So I think that's wonderful work. My question is, I understand that you do the slurry seals where you can't do the full, bring it up to standards, right? That's what you...
On unimproved streets, we typically do a thin overlay, so one to two inches of asphalt. The slurry seal program is on the improved residential street system.
So, my, I don't know how you make that decision, because like, I think I sent, I don't know if you saw it, but I sent a picture of a road that I was just out on, which could hardly be called a road anymore. It's a little piece of Seneca that's on the other side of Roosevelt, that has, I think it's got pits big enough to, for, to suck a car into, and, and very little road. And my feeling is, probably most of the people on that rent, so they don't really feel like they have a lot to say about what happens to their, their road, so I'd just like you to talk to people who are listening about what people can do when they find themselves with that kind of road, and what kind of expectation they can have for when they might get in the queue or get at least something, some level of repair to their road.
Up to this point, we've been concentrating our unimproved street efforts on the streets that already had asphalt on them. That particular segment was a gravel street, and the grade and gravel program was stopped back in early 90s, I believe.
I guess so.
So we haven't been doing grade and gravel streets for a number of years now. There used to be a program where we went out and put gravel down and bladed them once a year, maybe twice a year, but that was pulled out of the budget back in the mid-'90s.
I can sort of understand the budget stress, but I can also understand that people who live on those kind of roads in our, in our city feel like they've become kind of second-class citizens because it's something we don't... I mean, I realize we've had this backlog of unimproved roads all over the city that happened because they never got improved in the, in the first place, but I just don't know what, I'm just calling attention to these that seem to, it seems like some of those happen in the places where the people have the least amount to do about them, and they're sort of, their feeling about not being fully enfranchised members of our community are important to me.
Yeah, I agree, and I think without, without being able to commit to a specific course of action here today, I think that as, as we continue to look at what we can do with the road fund, it's certainly in better, better shape today than, than it was 10 years ago, although we can't reach everything we would like to reach, we'll, we'll continue to have some discussions about what nominally we could do with, with gravel streets, and see how, see how that fits in the, in the whole process of things.
Well, I've really appreciated what you've done on some of the, the streets that, in the Harlow area and other places, where people really were loud about how much they wanted something done, and I guess the next step for me, realizing that we have this huge mountain to climb of all street repair, I still think we have to kind of be conscious about that sort of social equity piece of, of road maintenance in our community, and that's sort of part of that triple bottom line as well. Betty, you're next.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for all the work. There is nothing that has brought more compliments than the street repair, not from people I know, but people just who recognize me as a city councilor, and time after time say thank you for fixing the streets. And when I say, would you think another bond measure would pass, they all say yes. So I think that people have liked what happened so much that they'll be willing to continue paying what, to improve the streets, and I hope you're happier than you were 10 years ago, Kirk.
Always happy.
Oh, yeah. I remember many gloomy reports... I remember many gloomy reports from you. And on the funding scenarios, the number three, which was eighteen million, would that come from just renewing the bond measure?
No, renewing the bond measure would put us back to about the ten or eleven million dollar a year that we've had over the last four or five years. So, it would actually take some other funding source to get us up to.
Something we don't have at all now. Thank you, that's all.
Just simply funding scenarios that, that were run to give, to give the different, different ideas as to what, what the system looks like, given different philosophies around how we go about funding that. And I think, I think the unstated part of that is that while we've made great progress at eleven million dollars per year, that if you really want to, to deal with the project for all time, that we are short of where we need to be investing. And so, despite the great progress that's been made, it, it is a work in progress.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for bringing up the little nub of Seneca.
That's just one example, I know, but.
It is just one example. There are a number in Bethel, but it's not unique to Bethel. It's throughout the city where the, what we did in the mid-nineties regarding forsaking, so to speak, the alleys and unimproved roads, it's not just, it's not just Seneca. But the alleyways also have the same, same kind of hurdles, and they're throughout the city, every place we go. So, at some point in the future, you know, maybe we should revisit what we're doing with alleys and, because as the mayor says, a lot of the people who perhaps are the lowest level of income are living in the places and feel they have the least input as to how, how improvements take place. But I will echo Councilor Taylor and everybody else who's said this in the past, that it's remarkable, absolutely remarkable, to see the numbers that have, that, we're looking at a net zero if we, if we keep at the eighteen million dollar level.
Increase to.
It's a very, very impressive. I don't know of any other city that can boast of such results and that are obviously supported by the, by the entire citizenry of Eugene. I do have a question regarding the arterial streets graph. And I noticed that in around two thousand and sixteen, you see a pretty sharp increase in the overlay. An overlay is just kind of the patching, waiting for the reconstruct to actually have to happen. It's putting a Band-Aid on, basically. And my question, sometimes I feel like I'm maybe the only person who ever asks about this particular project. But we're looking at West Eighteenth and West Eleventh are arterials, I suspect, right? And so, because of the, we don't have the West Eugene Parkway, that was going to take a lot of traffic up West Eighteenth and West Eleventh. What effort have we put into considering how much extra deterioration of those streets are happening because we don't have the West Eugene Parkway? What cost to the system is putting all of those trucks and all of that through traffic on Eighteenth and Eleven that would have otherwise gone on a, on a state highway and bypassed the unimproved streets?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's been any kind of quantitative analysis that, that what, what does the deterioration curve look like with this level of traffic versus some different level of traffic? Although generically, and you guys can, can jump in, generically, the deterioration on, on an asphalt street section is, is proportionate to time and numbers of what, what the engineers refer to as eighteen thousand pound axle loads. So, generically, the more traffic, the faster the deterioration. But to what, to what degree does fifty percent more traffic, ten percent more traffic? We would not typically get into that kind of a micro-analysis.
I suspected that to be the case. But, you know, doing simple math, and I think we take the projected numbers that were eighteen thousand pound axle loads that were going to be on the West Eugene Parkway, and divided that up among roughly West Eighteenth and West Eleven, we're going to apply that number of axle loads to those streets. And by some form or someplace, we're going to estimate how much extra we're spending on maintaining those streets as opposed to Parkway, which would have taken a great deal of the heavy traffic off of those two streets. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alan.
I'm glad you bring up the theoretical highway path, because it probably in my mind would have never been built. The feds would have stopped it, which was increasingly clear before we killed it. But that was, that was my conclusion, that it would never have been built. But anyway, can you go back to slide two? Thanks for all the work that you guys have done and all the contractors that have worked. And thanks to all the members of the committee that invested their time into putting together this report. It's really well done. And, and thanks for the community time. I'm impressed by, by how much we've improved our streets. I agree with what Betty said, that is the, I get a lot of compliments about that. I'm also impressed with the hundred and thirty-five jobs that we created by doing this. Those are all local. And, and on slide two, the one before, or slide three, I guess, the next one that has the backlog on it. Yeah, that one's impressive. That goes from a hundred and fifty million to a hundred and thirty-nine million now to, after this next year, back down to a hundred and eighteen million. But the next slide is the depressing slide. If we just keep doing what we're doing, the backlog will go from a hundred and eighteen million in ten years to two hundred and sixty-four million. So, we're backsliding by just doing what we're doing. And I think that's the overall message here. So, unless we increase funding to fifteen million or eighteen million, we don't make any headway. We go backwards. And, and we knew that. We knew that going into that. We knew that when we did the street repair funding committee that Chris and I were on. And, and what we came up with was a set of funding proposals, one of which was this bond, one of which was gas tax, another one was a transportation system fee that was supposed to be about equal to the bond measure. And so far to date, we've kind of made zero headway on that, that one. To me, on the transportation system fee, which was supposed to get us into that eighteen million, fifteen million dollar range, so that we can actually eliminate the backlog in a reasonable period of time, which is fifteen years from now. And, and to me, that, that, the outcome of that committee was a compromise. The bond measure was not my solution. It wa, I, I agreed to it because it was a package. The reason it wasn't my solution is because it has no nexus to how much you use the roads, whether or not you own a house, and how much your house would cost has zero to do with, with how much you use the roads, other than that you do use the roads. And it's actually unfair. One of the critical factors that, in that report, was that fifty percent of the people that use our roads don't live in Eugene. So, it's unfair to the people in Eugene to pay for our roads when fifty percent of the people that are using them don't pay anything. The transportation system fee would get us there. The question is, where are we with, with moving that along?
Yeah, I guess my answer today is not, not much different than what I've stated in the past, although probably today's environment is complicated a little bit by, by the economy and, and how we add that additional increment in. I, I think there's no question that, that the, the concept of a utility-based fee is one that we need to continue to pursue historically. It's, it's, it's been limited by our ability to collect it if we had, if we had such an ordinance in place. And so, that's the ongoing conversation with our partners at, at E-Web, for example, or, or finding a different billing mechanism. But I, I don't think you'd find any argument, Alan, from anyone about the, the prospect of that being, you know, not only a viable, legitimate, continuing component of transportation funding, but probably one that if we had a crystal ball looking ten to fifteen years out, one that, that we probably need to think about as, as replacing what, what we're seeing from fuel tax revenues. That's probably on a declining scale. And I, I think the, the time is, is ripe to, you know, continue that, that conversation about what, what we do, not only about getting to the number we need to get to, but maybe even, even retool the model as to what the components of that are. So, still in play, but not, not on the near horizon.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Public Works for executing great work over the last couple of years. And I want to thank the citizens and the Accountability Committee for watchdogging the whole thing. And I want, basically, I want to thank the council for crafting the bond measure in the first place. I, I wasn't on council then, but I watched the proceedings on TV. And, and people come up to me, like, to probably do all of us, and go, "God, thanks for fixing the street." And I, I tell, I tell them, "No, thank you. You're the ones that approved the, the bond measure. You, you have yourselves to thank." And then, of course, the excellent work that Public Works has done. And I just, I really feel that this is a great model that we, we can continue to use in the future for, where there's wide agreement in the community that there's a problem, get wide agreement on how to attack the problem. And I think the idea of starting smaller, realizing you can't do it all at once, but let's start with something, execute it well, demonstrate competence, have it planned out, showing how it's going to affect every part of the city. And then, it's just a model of competence and transparency and accountability, and have an accountability component. And then, you go to the next stage and ask somebody to, you've got something to demonstrate, and you go, "Well, now, that worked pretty good, so let's go to this stage." And I, I think that there's all kinds of things that, that city problems that we could use this model on. So, once again, thank you.
George Pauling?
Just a quick question. How many miles of gravel street do we still have left in the city? If you don't have that, then. Okay. While he's looking that up, I'll just go ahead. You know, I'll, I'll follow up on what George was talking about when he first started. You know, I too appreciate all the work by the Citizen Street Repair Review Board and the reports that have been submitted to us, and the work the Public Works Department has done, but particularly the voters. They're the ones that deserve the biggest thanks for putting the faith in, in the council's decision to put this bond measure out the way we did. You know, I'll be the first one to admit when I was wrong. And when we had this first discussion on the bond measure, I wanted to do a ten-year bond measure. And I'm glad we didn't, didn't go along with that idea, because I think, by the way we've done this, we've, we pretty much have set a track record on how we can apply the bond measure monies and follow, you know, what we said we were going to do, follow it out. And my understanding is we're going to have a discussion later on the, the scheduling for the discussion for the next bond measure. Okay? Because I do have some concerns, and I'll probably raise those at that time during that discussion. But I think, just make one comment right now, that my biggest, biggest worry is because we're in a completely different financial climate now than we were when this bond measure was first passed, I have some real concerns about the future in the next five years.
There are nine miles of gravel streets. That doesn't include the alleys. Thank you.
And John, I'm going to pop you in before I call Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted to further expound on your question, Alan, around the timing of a transportation system fee. You might remember, you know, we started that conversation around a whole lot of different items that really for a sustainable budget need to be talked about. We've talked about parks and recreation maintenance facilities. We've talked about human services, public service, public safety. Road is another one of those. And, and one of the things that the council has asked for, and we will be doing, is, is coming back in, our intent would be continuing in this calendar year, as we move into the summer, is continuing those conversations. And then, part of what the council will need to decide, what if any of those that you want to move forward, and what does that look like from a, an actual financing mechanism? So, that, that conversation is a part of that. And that will be coming back to you in that bigger financial picture discussion to include all the other items. And then, you all can decide from a policy, policy perspective, what you, if any, you'd like to pursue at that time. So, that will be coming back.
Chris.
Thank you. Very good work. In fact, you, you bring up, for me, is really essentially the, the good news, bad news kind of story. I mean, the good news we're all celebrating, which is we have managed to take what was a accelerating, out-of-control problem, and we have at least brought it to some degree under control. The good news is that the voters have supported us on that strategy. They recognize the need, and they've been there for us. And perhaps also the good news is that I'm proud to be a part of the city council group that actually did something about this. We, we did it. We, we took what was a rapidly accelerating backlog and deterioration, and we arrested it. The bad news is, like pedaling a bicycle uphill, if you stop pedaling, you roll back downhill. And that's the, the condition we're in right now. We can't stop pedaling. So, we've got to figure out what, what do we, what we need to do at this point. And I really appreciate your graph about the amount of dollars that are needed to keep from starting to go back down the hill. And John basically talked about what I talked about in terms of the need to recognize, we have a number of these exact same conversations that we need to have in a number of different areas. And is there some way to consolidate the conversations or approach them in some sort of unified way? I think that really is a valuable thing to talk about. There's only limited ways we can go to our community and ask them to recognize, much less support us in what we need to do. And I think the degree to which we can be smart about that is what will, will really be important. A question I had, when we look at the scenario, and we've talked about this a couple of times before, there's two major pieces. There's the O and M part, and then there's the backlog reconstruction piece. Of the fifteen or the eighteen million dollars, can you just remind us what portion of that is the O and M piece, and what portion of that is the, the backlog reconstruct piece of that?
Well, I'll, I'll try. Yeah, so the O and M, in the vernacular that we use, is, is all of our sign and signal and striping.
The street piece of it, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be the O and M side. So, just to make sure I understand the question. The number up here is, in its entirety, the pavement preservation program, so dealing with, with the backlog and the capital preservation of the, of the network. The O and M side of it is funded separately, and I won't use the term three-legged stool, but it is a separate, separate package of dedicated funding that, that deals with the work that Jeff missed out.
So, when we look at funding scenarios, we're not talking about a mix of those two. We're really talking in terms of what we're doing today. We're not talking about maintenance. We're just talking about the backlog.
Right.
The, the part that we have done such a really good job of getting under control, but stands precariously close to rolling backwards if we stop pedaling. And the warning you're bringing us today is, gosh, you've gotten us really far up the hill. You've pedaled really hard, and we really appreciate that. Why would you stop pedaling now? And so, I think that really is a significant point that, that we have to come to, is we don't want to stop pedaling. But we have this pedaling conversation about four or five different hills simultaneously. And how can we approach that? And what is our community comfortable with in terms of how many hills they want us to pedal up at the same time? This, to me, is one of the most important, has been since I first got on the council, and will obviously continue to be. So, I really appreciate the fact you've brought it up at this time, because we can't lose sight of the fact of how much we've gained, and it would be terrible to lose it.
And that makes me think about how important it is to, you know, this is a relatively insular discussion, even though we're on TV. It's a, it's a relatively insular discussion, and you really, we really do have to find a way to take that discussion and the challenge, infrastructure in general, discussions that we face out into the, into the community, and engage people in what they want for their community, what they're willing to do about it. And in this conversation alone about roads, I mean, really, roads are important not only for motorized vehicles, but they're important for the large number of people who like to bike. They're important for how people are able to, who are walking, can navigate the streets. They're important for people with disabilities. And in the case of the road that I, the little street I was talking about earlier, people are talking about having to get in their cars and put their kids in the car to get up to the end of the street to get their kid on a, on a bus, because the, the street that's in front of them is so unnavigable. So, it, those are not small issues for families and for the people of our community. And we kind of have to look at them in that deeper sense, as well as just the, the sort of mathematical equation of how, of how to deal with it. It, it really does translate into people's lives and how they can get around, and where they can go and where they can't go. And it makes a, it makes a real, for some of us, it's, you can, you can get by, even when you worry about whether you're going to take your, enter your car in the process. the process. But for a lot of people, having ways to move is a really, you know, important part of their livelihood and the livability for them. They depend on us keeping things where they... And the thing that I wanted to bring out earlier that is so important to me is, you know, if we all are pretty well, doing reasonably well, and we're able to even think about chipping in some to fix our roads, that's some of us. But there's a bunch of us that aren't in the position to even be doing that, and we have to somehow bring them into the equation as well. Because I'm guessing that's the reason I was talking about earlier, that most of the people on that aren't people who can be assessed and are going to be able to chip in to making their roads perform better for their families. But they still need roads that their kids can use and their families can live on. So it seems like a really important discussion to me. I've got Alan, then Pat.
How much do we spend on O&M on an annual basis?
Three and a half, four.
I think the total works on budgets, about $10 million.
$10 million, and then another $10 million on capital. So pick up where I left off, before Captain Metaphor came up with that great metaphor about rolling back down the hill because you stopped pelling. When I first got on the council, and the motion, I mean, the motion to set up that committee to try to fix this problem, because we were sliding backwards and we were hemorrhaging. And what we came up with was a plan that put a Band-Aid on it. And it stopped the bleeding, but it didn't fix the problem. And that's what I was interested in doing. We still have not fixed this problem. We have just put a Band-Aid on it. And I think this is one of the fundamental things that we need to do as a council and as a city, is provide good roads. And I fully support the broader conversation about revenue, and I think we should do that sooner than later. And we need to prioritize those things, and when they would happen, and how they would happen, and if they happen. But this one rises pretty close to the top for me. And when we compromised that committee and presented this package, the part that I was interested in was a user fee, something that was a nexus to what, how much you used the roads. And so that was either determined by how many miles you drove, or we couldn't really figure that out, so... Because we didn't have the technology, and we might get there someday, but we still don't. And the proxy we came up with was parking spaces, was a good proxy for how much driving was distributed to your business or your house. So some kind of user fee, the system transportation system fee, is where we need to go. I'm leaning towards not supporting another bond measure unless we have the other half of the conversation. I felt a little stung by the fact that I... What I put out was a compromise and supported the bond measure with the understanding we'd moved the second half of it down the road as well. And we haven't done that yet. And so I would like to see that bond measure conversation in parallel with the system transportation fee to move forward. Otherwise, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to support the half of the compromise that I didn't support in the first place.
Pat?
Thank you. I just wanted to pass along a kind of a sideways compliment that I heard last week to you, Kurt, and to the staff that take care of our streets, and to the... Also to the committee that's been working with you. A new member of our budget committee, who's from Spokane, and you've been from Montana, you kind of understand the similar kind of weather patterns. But she said, "You know, I hear people complaining about the streets in Eugene, but there's nothing to complain about in the streets, regarding the streets in Eugene." And I was able to remember that it's not always been that way. So that was, once again, a sideways compliment. Really should have been directed more at you than just into the area.
Betty?
I just want to respond to what Alan said. The good thing about the bond measure is that people got to vote on it. And if you want to charge them for parking spaces, I say let them vote on it. But when we talk about that, some very poor people could have houses that have two parking spaces, just because that's the way the house was built. And they can't afford to pay extra money for that. But if anything you want, if you let people vote for it, I'll be for it. But I think the bond measure, people voted for, they're very happy with the results, and they'll probably vote for it again. So I would hate to see us give up trying that. Thank you.
Okay. With that, anybody else?
I was just going to maybe close with where we are at, recognizing the overall funding issues, but with particular regard to renewing the bond measure. Last fall, when we most recently visited about where we're at in the bond measure, the direction from the council was to utilize the citizen panel to develop a recommendation for a prospective renewal of the measure in November 2012. And recognizing that fits into your broader discussion, I just thought I would update you that that group has taken on that charge, has had a meeting already, and will be meeting over the next couple of months. So we will be bringing in that recommendation later this year. If there's a desire to have a parallel conversation on transportation, user fees and that type of thing, that's certainly doable. That's just more of an update as to where we're at with that process more than anything else. As a matter of fact, the group is meeting later this afternoon to continue those particular deliberations.
Well, again, my thanks to the members of our committee. And I don't know if Ali, or Paul, or Bob, or John, if I have anything that they want to say.
John always wants to say something.
Bob?
I just want to compliment staff on the way they've handled this, their competency. They've done a great job. Obviously, we have a large challenge ahead of us in the future, and I suspect that all of us collectively will be able to come up with some way of at least reducing that backlog to something that's palatable.
Well, I do think the value, one of the values that you guys bring to this discussion is when we, perhaps when we think about how we're going to deal with some of these other issues, you can be voices that help us with the community in that discussion as well. Because you've been heavily engaged, so I think we would count on your help. John?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to the staff and everybody, and let you guys know that we are doing that next round, so that you guys will have a more informed set of points to look at when you're deciding whether or not to go forward with a new bond measure. I think that some of the issues that we were constrained by in this last bond measure needed a little bit more deep thought, such as the shared use paths. You know, we just... That was just kind of put in at the last minute, as I recall the discussion last time. And what we found in our deliberations over the last three years was that was... The wording of it was a little bit problematic. You know, it said $350,000 per year. Well, what if we had a project that called for $389 million? Can we do it or not? So we're working out some of those types of things. And also, we've also gotten more information. You know, the Bike Pad Master Plan is now a tool that we can use to help the discussion to give to you guys. So we're moving forward with that. And also, it would be great if you guys have input that you would like us to hear, so that we can flush it out more, because we've got the time, more so than a 45-minute work session, which is what, basically, it'll come to you guys in. So that's what we're looking for. We'll be meeting later on today and probably two or three other times before it comes back to you.
So Paul was out of the room, and Howie, do either of you have anything you want to add to the... For us to hear?
Nope.
Okay. So just accept our thanks. Paul?
I do have a question that we're going to take up in our meeting a little later this afternoon, and that's the issue of when a street can get improved. We get questions about this quite often. What are the criteria? What is the city policy on unimproved streets? And I think that needs some clarification. I get more questions about... When people learn I'm on this committee, I get quite a few questions. And I'd be glad to pass them back to the city council, but it'd be easier if I knew what the city policy was.
I think there's people that are going to be talking with you again, and help you out with that. Eric, did you have something you wanted to add? No. So I hope that you did hear in this conversation, and again, I don't... With everything else we have on our plates, I don't know how we deal with it. But I do think this... The really unimproved streets are the ones that don't even have never had any covering on them, and the people live on them, and they're part of our community. That's... I hope that's part of your discussion as well. So, thank you all very much. End the meeting now.